I'll have to tell her.
Thank you.
Geez, Dave. That's where they all went.
That's where they went.
Shoot, we're gonna save money this month.
Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
Dave Burris.
Present.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston. Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Greg Romi.
Present.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Melanie Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, please let the rest of the folks know before you vote. Need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the minutes from the September 19th council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 19th council meeting.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the minutes from the September... We just did that one.
We could do it again.
Want to do it again?
You can do it again, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Bills in between?
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $131,611.98.
Second.
Discussion.
I got a problem. Oh, no, I don't.
No.
Maybe next one will have a problem. I'm okay.
You're all right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims.
I abstain from this vote.
I... I make a motion to approve the current claims in the amount of $388,948.11.
And I got your abstention. Thank you.
Discussion.
Yes. On page one. Number two. I thought we paid Shedco $10,000 to do things for the city of Hot Springs. Why are we paying for it to write a grant? And regarding... If we got anybody.
When? When you talk about paying them $10,000 to do things for the city of Hot Springs, it's certainly to promote the whole city in all things economic development. This particular one was... There was an opportunity to apply for grant funding from the state of South Dakota for EV charging stations. We don't have folks on city staff that are... That's familiar with writing grants as the Shedco folks are. So, reached out to them and asked them to help us with writing the grant. So, in my mind, that's different from how you phrase the question. They are not an employee of the city of Hot Springs.
Well, I know they're not an employee, but we give them $10,000. And I figured that was to help Hot Springs with certain things that we might need. Am I wrong?
Uh, no.
I guess, you know, before the meeting, when we were discussing that question amongst ourselves, if that's allowed, and Greg asked the question, my assumption was we do not pay all of Shedco's operating expenses. We contribute whatever we budget each year to their operating expenses. And where this is a specific task for the benefit of the city, that's, I guess, I'm assuming why we were billed for it as opposed to their overall activities that deal with generating economic development opportunities for the Southern Hills area.
We don't have a history of paying her for grant writing assistance. That's a nice assumption, but just to share that along with that.
Guess in my world, I know that she's something that I've forgotten, electric cards, but I never... I didn't think there was a decision that had been made on that.
A decision that hasn't been made.
On electric cars, service of the charging stations yourselves, or to put a mat around town and things like that.
No, no decision's been made on that. I mean, that obviously has to come to council. This was an initial review to write the grant for it, which Shedco felt was outside of their scope of contract. It was a couple hundred bucks. We agreed to do it because we really needed the information. And so, anyway, that's... That was the background.
Well, I know it was on the suspended sidewalk plans, and we decided not to do it. So, I'm just curious why all of a sudden now...
Because the state has now gotten federal money to give out grants for the installation of EV charging stations. No decision's been made whether we would even submit for the grant. I mean, you have to approve that before we do that. But we have to get the footwork done before we do anything.
The charging stations that were part of the conversation with the suspended sidewalk, it wasn't the city that decided not to have them on the suspended sidewalk. It was Black Hills Energy, who had pointed out they can't put the infrastructure on the suspended sidewalk itself. It was too expensive to put it there, and we didn't want a bunch of additional electric conduits and everything hanging off of our suspended sidewalk. So, until the state grant funding opportunity came across, it wasn't higher on our radar. An opportunity to apply for grant funding for EV charging stations.
Is there stuff in that city will charge for electricity too?
I don't even think we've applied for the grant.
We haven't even applied for the grant yet. But in answer to your question, what other cities are doing and what is the norm, if you will, now, this is all new, and I don't even know anything about it. So, what... Not only any of us do, but except I know they're electric. But the... At the end of the day, the intent would be to have one or more charging, pay-as-you-go charging stations in town to assist drawing folks up from Shadrin on their way up to Rapid or wherever. There is no place to do that in between here and there. Now, there will be, I'm sure, in a few years, but...
But their car runs out of electricity from Shadrin to Rapid, dirt and trouble.
Yeah. I don't know much about you, but...
Question number two is on page three. Hanging rack tool holder. I'm told it's for what they tow airplanes around with?
Yep.
How long have we had that tool to tow airplanes around with?
That particular tool, I do not know.
Longest airport?
Do not know. The longest at the airport, don't know the lifespan on that.
Did OSHA come ahead and say, "You guys need to get these on a rack"? Because I'm told that the gentleman thinks it's dangerous having them lay around.
That's true. No, OSHA did not say that. Our staff is smart enough to...
Well, they're over budget. Don't you think they could've waited a little bit longer?
For OSHA to say we need to get a safety problem out of the way?
No, or to buy them later when they're not over budget?
Sure. We can do it anytime you want, Craig. No, I'm just saying, we identify... The manager is responsible for identifying a safety problem. He's solving the safety problem so we don't have a lawsuit. To me, that's a common sense buy.
And how do we know it's a safety problem? Where are they at out there therefore?
They're walking over them. They're laying on the floor. People are stepping over them.
And there's just... How the place formed?
Well, let me offer something, and this is just a guess, because when I saw this on the current claims, it was the first time I heard about it. Where those racks or that tow bar used to be is where our commercial client now is occupying. So, that is probably why these are now out in the normal traffic way and need to be off the floor. I'm assuming that's why.
That's correct.
The airport manager wanted to get them off the floor because there's more pedestrian traffic in the area, and where he used to put them out of the way without hanging them up, that wall space is no longer available because we rented it out.
That is correct, Bill. Thank you for clarifying.
How big are these things?
I'm sorry, I have no idea.
They're five, six feet long.
Is it just one?
I think there's two or three.
Just normal hand tools or...
No, these are tow bars for the planes that we move around.
It's not the idea that...
No, I'm...
...got it? The idea is he's over budget, and he's spending money like he has a large budget in his ass.
I guess... My opinion is if it's a safety issue, doesn't matter if somebody's over budget. We gotta fix it.
You are correct, though, that it does matter, because that's statute. You've taken oath to keep your spending within the budget authority, but we are already appropriating the airport budget.
And if it's a safety thing, they should've been done years ago.
Well, we just got the contractor in there a couple months ago, so...
Well, they became a safety issue this year when we got the commercial client. I understand what you're saying, Craig, about the airport budget.
You're right. And you're right about that.
I totally get that. I'm not trying to defend the purchase. I just, I think I understand why he did it now versus...
My question is, is this like the third thing that he's asked for, and is this going to become, start becoming a trend?
This year, he's over, so he will have to ask you for additional appropriations, and hopefully he tries to limit those to needed and necessary purchases only throughout the remainder of the year.
And there are some personnel matters we can discuss in an executive session, if you want. I'm more than happy to do that.
I don't think we can do that because personnel's not on the...
I'm not saying tonight. I said we can do it at the next council meeting.
You can do it at any time, correct, Garland? As long as you state the stat... You can go into executive session to discuss any of those authorized topics at any time, whether it's on the agenda or not, if you needed to.
Yes, as long as it says fits in one of those categories.
Anything else, Craig?
No, I'm good.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. Motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims.
Make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims at $5,116.89.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Takes us to communications from the public. Is there any of the large public that's with us tonight that wants to address the council? No. Oh, yes, thank you. We're past it. Thank you. All right. We have a 7:10 public hearing for a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from the Mammoth Site for the Southern Black Hills Realtors for Kids fundraiser event scheduled for October 14th, 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Mammoth Site, 1800 US Highway 18 bypass. Anybody from the public would like to address that? Temporary alcoholic beverage license application for the Mammoth Site.
Robert Paul, 1327 Schofield Street. And before I begin, I would like to say I am a huge fan of the Mammoth Site. It's a wonderful place, and it's great management, but I do have a few questions concerning this fundraiser. My first question is, is this alcoholic beverage beer and wine, or is it beer, wine, and hard liquor?
We have all three checked on the application.
All three checked. And is there going to be an outside vendor providing the alcohol, or is the Mammoth Site buying and dispersing on their own?
That's not one of the questions we ask.
Okay.
We can. We don't.
Third question. On events like this, are the profits from the sale of that devoted to the actual fundraising portion of that? Is it split?
We have no idea. We don't know that.
Okay.
You'd have to talk to the event organizer about what they do with the funds they raise from this event.
Is the event organizer here tonight?
No, but...
Don't think so.
Yeah, they... You could talk to Preston Gable. That's who applied for the application, so I would call him.
I guess I would rather see the city council talk to Preston Gable and get the answers to the questions. Personally. Next question is, this is a kids fundraiser. Does that also mean that is a fundraiser that kids are invited to participate, that there's going to be events for them, and that they will be around the dispersment of alcoholic beverages?
Can you speak up?
Can't hear it, Mary.
I talked to one of the board members today, and no kids will not be present at dysfunction.
Okay, so this is adults only?
Adults only, yes, sir.
Okay. I have had problems in the past with events like this where children are present and the alcohol is dispersed, because I think it really sends a bad message.
It is a public place, too. I point out, they can't restrict children from the parks, so I just want to clarify.
What it is, is they're gonna go in the vending area, they're gonna put tables around. Yes, the Mammoth Site does not have, per se, a policy against alcohol being there. They don't serve alcohol there, but this is something that the Realtors put on every year, I believe, and then that's how they... They're doing this.
Okay. I guess the last thing that I would wonder would be, is the success of this type of a event dependent on whether or not alcohol is served at these? And these... Please don't misunderstand. I'm not advocating everybody being a teetotaler. I mean, if people want to drink, that is fine with me, but at public events, and especially when there's younger people around, I have a real difficult time with something like this. In the past, I have kind of indicated I'd like to have the council deny on these, but I understand some of the situations that you get into that. I would respectfully ask that this be tabled until the next meeting, and until such time that we can get the information. Thank you.
I don't think there's another council meeting that does that.
No, that's...
What would we table for?
Because we can't...
We can't change the statute. And if you want us... I don't... There would be limitless questions about the event that if you are requesting that we add that to our procedure for getting these, then we need to clarify that. But the approval or denial of this is based on the applicant's suitability and the location, so I'm... Correct. For what, though? Is what I'm saying.
Bob wanted the city to ask him those questions. Am I correct?
I would think that as council people, that would be a responsibility that you would undertake. Well, I may be incorrect. I'm sorry.
The issue we have is, I understand your questions and concerns, but none of them really align with the two decision criteria we have under South Dakota codified law to approve or deny. And so, we could delay it through a table, but it would provide information that really shouldn't affect our decision. Either the applicant is suitable or not, either the location is suitable or not, and that's what we've got to decide on. I understand where you're coming from, Bob.
In my eyes, and thanks, Bob, for your concerns, but when I look at the application, they've checked all the appropriate boxes. They're suitable. Business, they're suitable location. Server will check IDs. I don't see anything on the application where I would deny any of it. I think they're meeting the criteria.
And to your question, Craig, if the motion were tabled, yes, it would be beyond the date that the Mueller Center wants to hold the event.
Be at the Mammoth Site.
Mammoth Site. Your next meeting is October 17th.
I posed that question to one of the board members today and said that this is location. It's a family-oriented environment, but the person told me that the facility would be closed, and then they would be doing this after hours, so no kids would be involved.
Oh, it's at the Mammoth Site. It's not at the park.
Right.
What's that?
It's... Yeah, it's at the Mammoth Site. It's not at the park.
It's a private, yes.
Private property?
Yeah.
Any other comments from the public?
Misty, I will be abstaining from this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will be abstaining as well.
Any other questions from council?
As long as they met what is legally required, and our form is set up as so, is that not correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Really, I see no reason to deny.
All right. Any other questions? Need a motion to approve, deny, or table?
Make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from the Mammoth Site for the Southern Black Hills Realtors for Kids fundraiser event scheduled for October 14th, 22, pending... Or, excuse me, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Mammoth Site, 1800 US Highway 18 bypass.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? Any more questions? Misty, I should've closed the public hearing now about 7:20.
We're closing at 7:22, how's that?
All right. Would you call the roll, please?
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Abstain.
Craig Romi.
Abstain.
Linda Varvel.
Abstain.
Melanie Wilson.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
David Burris.
Yes.
You have four yeses and three abstentions.
So, the motion passes. Four out of seven? All right, so the motion passes. All right, we'll go back to communications from the public. Any other communications from the public? In front of council, there's three I'd like to read, communications from the public. A note was received at Evans Plunge. Quote, "Jojo from Colorado says, 'Thank you for being open. We had the best time at Evans Plunge on our vacation. Everyone in our family said it was the highlight of the trip. We will be back.'" End quote. Comment from airport... Or airport comment on Air Nav. Mark Fennell said, quote, "KSHR was on the way home from a month flying to Alaska and back one afternoon, and overnight in Hot Springs was an awesome day. Rick B. met us at Tie Down to welcome us to the community. Best grass strip you've ever landed on. Courtesy Car, 411, about hot things in Hot Springs, tinted on the soft grass by the lobby building. Couldn't get any better here." End quote. And the last one is a note received from Kim Moyer. Black Hills Gateway Bodybuilding Event. Quote, "Thanks to Chris Katke at the Mueller Civic Center. Always professional and helpful with my events." End quotes. So, on behalf of the city, I would like to extend my thank you to these folks for making Hot Springs a very warm and welcoming community where folks want to come back to. Thank you, folks. We appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can offer one thing. Misty had a good recommendation that I'd like to include these comments. Well, no. My recommendation was to include these every council meeting. Misty's recommendation, and I think she's right, is I will do these at the end in my report rather than as the communication from the public. I just think it's a good idea that we have facility managers, department heads bragging on themselves when things go right, so they hear enough bad things. I think it's important.
All right. Our next one is a proclamation, but Misty had pointed out that no one is here from Black Hills Habitat, and asked us to not read the proclamation tonight. So, when they're able to join us, we'll go ahead and do that.
I don't think they plan to attend. You read it the first time they weren't here. They're just gonna come in and pick up the proclamation.
Okay.
My understanding.
Bill, thank you for reading the proclamation.
Well, with all those good things sent, I'd like to say to all those departments, thank you for your services to our tourists and making our town look good. Very rare that we get to hear these letters.
I think there's more of them out there.
I'm sure.
All right, that takes us to personnel. A motion to approve personnel actions A through E.
Make a motion to approve actions on personnel from A through E.
Second.
Discussion. Point out personnel action E is for information only. Excuse me, the full-time police officer you folks approved at the last council meeting withdrew or resigned the following day.
Was that the one that was uncertified?
No, I believe... I don't know.
Yeah, he was not a certified officer.
Think it was uncertified, yeah.
Oh, okay. Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. So, brings us to new business, item A, discussion only. Countywide law enforcement. Reminder to the public, please let your alderman know how you feel about countywide law enforcement, either in favor of or opposed to, and your reasons either way, or let City Hall know. We being Bill, Deborah, myself, Chief Norton, Sheriff-elect Norton, Sheriff Evans, County Commissioner Joe Allen. JR, you over there?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Met to begin the conversations about possible countywide law enforcement. Went over a very rough draft, which I'll share with council later tonight. And so, we've begun having the discussions to see what the county would like in a possible contract, what the city would like in a possible contract. So, other than that, not much to update you with. Once we get to a point where the county and the city agree on what we would like to have in the contract at a potential cost, then we'll get it out to the public and give them an opportunity to respond of whether they're in favor or not. So, those discussions are ongoing, and we'll get to resolution. One thing I was encouraged to hear is that neither party is anxious to rush into this, that we would like to have some kind of decision in front of the public so that they can tell us what they want to do, Hot Springs residents, so that we can factor that into our budget considerations for 2023, and the county likewise. We'll keep working the problem.
Dear Nelson, I've had a few people call and text me, and... Dear Nelson, I've had a few people call and text me and
Please stand by for this.
If you want to pass any specific
It happens.
Sound to me, Craig.
Well, I'm along. They were in favor of just keeping law enforcement in town. Oh, and there's like a dozen of them that thought it should come to the vote of the people if it happens that way. They don't think it should be the city council.
They can refer. That's the action in our statute to allow our citizens to not agree and ask for a public vote. Am I correct, Garland? So the council makes the decision, or they can propose an initiative.
It's kind of like the Plunge.
They did an initiative, I believe.
Yeah, we didn't want to buy it outright, so the people of Hot Springs.
We can't turn it over to them, though, and tell them they have to decide for us. You can make a decision, or they can propose an initiative to go on it. And we don't counsel them on how to do that, other than give them the guidance to where they can find that.
Yes, I told Matt, but I just wanted to tell everybody what they thought.
Are these mostly out of your ward or just sprinkled throughout?
There are four that wasn't in my ward, the rest of them are
So I keep reminding the public, you know, to let the ward, the council members or City Hall know. And I'm also encouraging everybody to put it in writing and make sure that we understand why you're for it or why you're against it, so that all of that can be part of the conversation for both sides that are working on this. And I've also said that I don't think it is a decision that the council alone should make. You need that input from the public. If the input is overwhelmingly in favor one way or the other, I certainly think it makes it easy for the council to make a decision. And then if the public wants to take it to vote, there are measures they can do to, you know, take it to vote. So I agree with you, Craig. I don't think it's a decision that the council should, it should be an uninformed decision. And I'll keep asking the public to respond. Once we get to a point where we know what we want the contract to contain and once there's a price, I'd said early on that we have the ability to put a survey on the city's website that people can fill out which way they want to go, once we provide the information to them. And my thought there is to require, you know, an address or a name or something to make sure that Craig isn't voting five times for his
There's two in our family.
His personal preference. We're going to make sure that all the information is out there before we ask you folks.
I have a lot of cousins.
Any other comments or questions on the countywide law enforcement? All right, new business, item A. Possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the police chief to sign the acceptance and sub-reception agreements.
This is item B.
Item B.
While we're discussing this, we kicked around in admin finance today that we want to remove in, what is it, the third sentence where it talks about awarded for four mobile? We're going to delete the four and just have it awarded four mobile computers?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the police chief to sign the acceptance and sub-reception agreements to, between the City of Hot Springs Police Department and South Dakota Department of Public Safety Office of Homeland Security for two separate state homeland security program grants awarded for mobile computers for patrol vehicles, $66,687.10 and secure data management system, $22,567.86.
Second.
Discussion.
Who's going to install the computer?
Sontec.
Melanie, JR, is there anything you'd like to add to this from the admin finance today?
No, I think you covered it, Mayor.
Yep.
Any other questions from council?
Only question I have, now, this, these computers, they're going into the car, so what about the ones that we do have?
We don't have any in-car computers.
No, we don't.
We don't at all?
No, we have cameras and other like speed devices, but we don't have computers.
So we're excited about these because they will maximize the officers' time staying in the vehicle and getting a lot of their reporting done before they get back to the office, back to the police station and having to finish up the paperwork after their standard shift. They can do it while they're in the vehicle.
Plus, if anybody's ever seen these operate, they get real-time data information on whatever they're doing at the time, whether they're researching a subject, which could bring up known acquaintances and everything, all available to them right there, right then, without an issue. So I think it's a good idea they have that available while they're in the field, doing whatever they need to do.
So kind of in essence, this cuts out giving the driver's license to dispatch, then dispatch looks it up. This would be on the computer, right?
Can be all right back to them.
I think they'll still use dispatch, but like JR said, they'll be able to use the searcher system in car to gather information, but then they can do their reports. They won't need to go back to the office.
Oh, I get that part.
It won't replace their, the interactions with dispatch.
Okay.
Totally anyway, it may
It'll help out, it'll enhance the whole thing. Okay.
They may be able to do some queries on their own without contacting dispatch.
Okay.
Dispatch still needs to know where they're at and
Oh, yeah.
Do their work and
Yep. That still will happen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item C. A possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the U.S. Department of Interior Geological Survey.
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the U.S. Department of the Interior, U.S. Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement for the Dakota Water Science Center Water Resources Investigations Project for the operation and maintenance of 06402000 Fall River at Hot Springs Gage during the period 10/1/22-9/32/3 and the amount of $4,525.
Second.
Discussion. So this is a recurring cost the city pays every year for the river gauge that's just south of University Avenue. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item D. A possible motion discussion to approve a plat of Robbins Track West.
I make a motion to discuss to approve a plat of Robbins Track West and Robbins Track East of Goddard Edition, City of Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly Lot 1 and Lot 2 of Track LK.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item E. Possible motion discussion to authorize the finance officer to roll over the maturing Evans Plunge Mineral Springs DSR treasury bond.
I make a motion for discussion. Are you going to go?
And if you would change the term from 4.02% to 4.14%. Is that correct, Misty?
Yeah, it's not the term. It's still 12-month term. The rate is at 4.14%.
Should I go ahead and make the motion for discussion to authorize the finance officer to roll over the maturing Evans Plunge Mineral Springs DSR, U.S. Treasury Bond at South Dakota Fit and reissue the balance into another treasury bond for a 12-month term at 4.14%.
Second.
Discussion.
No one's offering like 7%.
These treasury bond rates are better than any CD rates comparatively, although short-term CD rates are coming up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item F. A possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from city administrator.
Make a motion to approve travel training request for city administrator Jeff Temple to attend 2022 South Dakota Municipal League Conference in Watertown, South Dakota, October 4th through 7th, 2022.
Second.
Discussion.
Vacation?
Watertown? Let's say it's a misnomer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. We're into committee reports. Admin and finance, JR, Melanie?
Admin finance met today at 1 o'clock here at the Mueller Civic Center. President Mayor Nelson, Finance Officer Misty Summers Walton, co-chair councilwoman Melanie Wilson, Councilman Bill Lukens, Chief of Police Ross Norton, and myself, Chair Councilman JR Huddleston. Old business. Additional costs related to water and wastewater replacement road project, ongoing review and discussions necessary. The city will be seeking additional funding from the state for water sewer and suspended sidewalk. Number two, gauge installation at city shop propane tank, pending discussions with Jeff Temple. Updates, PD Homeland Security grant for five mobile computers. Initial cost estimated, all paid by Homeland Security Grant, $64,500. Ongoing added expenses, $5,800 estimated. It's on the council's agenda tonight. Community access road grant, streets around the school, withdrawal update, updates are pending. Clothing allowance policy, PD utilities and maintenance. JR is looking into the policies and current purchase practices. Six, discuss selling land the city owns adjacent to Simon Quarry Cemetery in Hot Springs Canyon, pumping station, five acres landlocked Simon Quarry, seven to nine acres north of Hayden's and over 100 acres behind the pump station. This is under discussions and review. More research is needed. Number seven, updates on wayfinding signs, professional service contract with ISG. That work is in progress. New business, review monthly finance reports. Misty provided to review. Sales tax collection is up. Discuss minimum wage increase. Mill levy has dropped. Unclaimed property report is negative. Misty will, excuse me, cover more in her report. Committee member items, airport lease agreements discussed, airport fuel prices discussed, and discuss food sales tax. We discuss the food sales tax proposed by Governor Knone. That is an income for the city. Wastewater employment part-time, there's wastewater treatment. Employee has resigned and wants to work part-time. However, there is no position for the part-time employee. Is currently working part-time. There's more to come on this subject. Hail damaged vehicle repairs, PD plan to use the funds on a new vehicle. Chief Norton gave a proposal to use the hail damage insurance monies to purchase a new vehicle. Some monies are available in the police budget. Committee agreed to allow Chief Norton to go forward. Hail damage to city buildings, review. There are 36 buildings damaged with 1.4 million in damages. Misty to send documents to the council. Citywide auction, October 26th through November 1st. Resolution to surplus by September 19th. Notice of auction must be published two times in the paper prior to the auction date was discussed. And to contact the auctioneer and discuss the dates, the public can review the items. Review state minimum wage increase affecting 1/1/23, 85 cent increase from $9.95 to $10.80. Ongoing discussions prior to 1/1/23. The meeting ended today at 3:03. Next meeting is November 7th, 1:00 PM, Mueller Civic Center. JR, subject to your questions.
Melanie, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't, thank you. JR, thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Is this new police car that you're going to use to hail damage? Purchase? Are you not going to fix the car and clean it up?
The plan includes fixing the two newest vehicles and not the other ones. And they are, in this batch of claims you already approved, to pay to repair the three damaged windshield, so they have already repaired all the windshields.
Okay, how much is left after we fixed the other two newer cars? Do you know?
Uh, yep.
Forty-five.
Uh, that's not after we fixed it, though. We talked about it today. It's $11,986 in repairs. They got $45,808 from the insurance and they have about $24,000 left in their budget.
Can you go buy a new car? Brand new?
Yes.
Because the one we ordered last year that we budgeted for this year that we couldn't get because they couldn't fulfill the orders and we got cut, has come in and we can get it.
Didn't we use that money to buy that car from Florida?
Well, we have this supplemental money now. We didn't outfit that vehicle either, so $25,000 was spent on that vehicle, yes, but with this supplement and the additional money he has in his budget, he has
And we're working through Garland about that vehicle we got as well.
Oh, I was just going to ask about that.
Yeah.
Well, if we get stuck with it, maybe we can put the motor in there, the cop car too.
That's a thought, but we're working with Garland right now.
That's been part of the discussion, Craig.
There is four miles on this car, though.
And to your question about, you know, the hail damage on the rest of the vehicles, the chief had shared today that the others have significant miles on them and he would rather have, you know, a new vehicle. Because it's, we don't want the vehicle we got, in my opinion.
The ones from Florida?
Yeah.
I agree.
So this is an opportunity to not spend all of the money received from hail damage on fixing dents that don't improve the functionality of the vehicle and turn it around and to get the new vehicle we had hoped to be able to get at the beginning of the year when we were told they weren't available, and one is now available.
Well, when Misty said there's $25,000?
Approximately.
Is that for the car that they're going to purchase?
It's what was already budgeted and not spent because we didn't get the first one that now we can get.
So the reason that, what we need to hear from you folks is if there's anyone who would like to have more discussion, if you feel that that isn't the right way to go, if you support the recommendation from admin finance to go ahead and use a combination of the hail money and what's left in the police budget to purchase the new vehicle.
Isn't that insurance fraud?
No, and we have detailed estimates. It's not, we're allowed to do it, to be clarified. And we have detailed estimates on the full outfitting of the vehicle and the purchase of the specific vehicle, if you're interested.
So if we don't fix the car, shouldn't we give the insurance company back the money?
No, we do not have to. What we do have to consider is that if there's additional damage to a vehicle that we didn't repair that causes more damage, the amount that we've already gotten is going to come off of that, so we wouldn't be able to fully replace something. But as Mayor Nelson mentioned, the review with the chief, those are high-mileage vehicles that are nearing the end of their useful life and the damage isn't significant. He said they still look good and we did repair all the windshields.
So are they coming off full coverage insurance?
No. They'll still be fully covered. We fully cover our police vehicles, all of them, regardless of their age or mileage, just because of the nature of their work.
On the titles, it'll say that there's hail damage or something?
No, we're not changing titles.
We're going to claim it again if it hails out.
Not for hail, correct.
That's, that's, yeah, exactly right.
But the insurance adjuster already has pictures of that, so.
Yeah, if there's a full collision and there's additional damage, we may get some payout, but it'll be reduced by the amount of the claim. but it'll be reduced by the amount of the claim that wasn't repaired.
Okay.
Good questions.
So if counsel is supportive of the idea, then Bill and/or I will let Chief Norton know after the council meeting tonight. He can get in touch with the dealer tomorrow, and he thought the vehicle might even be here as early as Friday. Hope we're not hearing any strong opposition to it.
Thank you, good idea.
All right.
Makes sense to me. And I just would like to throw in, I appreciate Chief Norton.
Absolutely.
Thinking outside the box and taking a look at his budget and, I mean, he, he didn't come to Admin Finance with a half-baked idea. He came with a plan, with spreadsheets, and he came well-prepared. And I just want to say, I appreciate his professionalism and his forethought and ability to do some strategic planning on something that looked like wasn't going to happen, so.
So we did a good job with our chief.
Yes, we did.
I think you did, yeah. I like the fact that he has automotive maintenance in his background.
Just a little bit.
I'm always hammering on having documents and all the feedback from repairs done on every piece of equipment the city has. So that right there is a big improvement to me.
Okay, so we talked about the hail damage to the police vehicles. JR, JR had also talked about selling, possibly selling land, city land on Hotbrook and by the Simon Quarry. We have been talking about that at two different committees. We've been talking about it at Public Works and at Admin Finance, and I'm going to take it off of the Public Works agenda. It's more about selling land than it is about fixing land. You're certainly welcome to obviously attend the Admin Finance meetings to continue the discussion.
So it's my idea, yeah? Okay.
And what I'd shared at Public Works and what I'd shared at Admin Finance today, the more difficult one is going to be selling the land to Simon. Simon is interested in having the conversations, but we need to find somebody that has expertise in the mineral value of that land so that we know what it's worth. The value is in the minerals that are below the ground rather than the surface acreage of the property itself.
We could be getting somewhere. I made a couple of phone calls. Hopefully we'll, we, with one gentleman are playing phone tag, so hopefully we get that connection.
Is Public Works going to deal with that one involved because of the rubble? Or is that with Finance?
I'd like to keep all three of those on Finance. Okay, it's selling property, not how we're going to deal with it.
Every time we work on it, Craig?
We know we can't sell it to just one person.
Every time we work on it, we will mention it was your idea.
I have a comment about the land purchase. Can we verify we own the mineral rights before we move forward with that?
That was going to be a question I was going to ask. It's everything in order.
We, to your point, yes, we need to verify it, but in the lease that we entered into a number of years ago with Hill's material, it does specifically state in there that the city, in fact, does own the mineral rights to the property.
And we know we can't sell it to just one person either. We know we have to offer it.
No, I was just thinking of our previous issue with selling minerals and mineral rights, and we got to the end of the story and found out we didn't have it. So I just wanted to confirm that we do have those rights.
Well, I would think we did. Seems that we own the water rights and everything. I think we have.
Do we have a piece, a paper that anybody's seen states that, though?
Maybe on that lease, right?
It would be, it would be on the deed that we have for the property, I imagine. And the other issue was the airport and the FAA being the federally funded airport. This is not airport property.
Yep. But we have run into the past, we had documents, but we could never find them. Or, so the reason I'm saying, has anybody seen it? Is just to, just, just to make sure.
Yep, we'll make sure, we'll do our deed.
All right. Airport Advisory, Bill?
Airport Advisory will meet Thursday, October 6th, 8:30 a.m. at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Waste Management, Larry?
Next meeting will be Thursday, November 10th, 7 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
All right. Historic Preservation, Deborah's not with us. They meet Wednesday night at 5 o'clock here at the Mueller Center. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
Okay. At our last meeting, I said that I would check into a couple of items that were questioned. As of last Monday, Golden West was still needing to assess the needs of the plunge for providing phone service for the building. And then tomorrow, on October 4th, the company is scheduled to pour a textured garage poly rosin on the observation deck, and it's supposed to be slip-proof, and they're supposed to do that tomorrow.
Who did you say is doing that?
Um, I didn't get the name of the company.
Oh, okay.
I said "the" company.
The company.
Me, that's the name.
And so then that brings us to our next meeting will be October 13th on, at noon at the plunge.
Are they going to close the plunge tomorrow to port us so it doesn't stay?
It's Tuesday tomorrow. They will be closed.
Closed anyway.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I think he was saying that they were going to have the observation deck closed for a period of time while this set up and hardened. My information was from Tom.
Are their phones working right now? This is the upgrade that you're talking about?
Yeah, the, this is the assessment for the upgrade, and he said their phones work periodically, and it also affects the ATM in the lobby.
That's not our ATM, though. We don't get anything from that.
You're kidding. Does it start spitting out mine or something?
Not yet, not yet.
I'm going to go there and use the phone.
Extra 20.
Any questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda.
Okay, thank you.
Parks Recreation, Larry?
Next meeting will be this Wednesday, the 5th, at 2 p.m. at the Mueller Center. Everyone is invited.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, again, Deborah's not with us, and Planning and Zoning meets the third Wednesday of every month here at the Mueller Center, and I believe this month they're still at 7 o'clock. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Public Safety meets this Thursday, October 6th, Mueller Center Conference Room at 2 p.m. We think we'll be ready for anybody that wants to discuss countywide law enforcement about 3 p.m., and we'll put the coffee pot on and stick around until 6 p.m.
Thank you. Public Works, Dave, Craig?
Craig, did you want to do this? I know, yeah, it's been a while.
I didn't take notes.
All right.
I can remember some of them.
Public Works meeting was September 27th. We are going to touch on a few of these, but those, our visitor that day was Karen Hagan. Her conversation was asking about trees on the new sidewalks. I think she's going to be getting some more information probably by next meeting. New business, we have Bear Avenue light, and for the life of me, I can't make out my own writing on the beginning of this. It is being looked at, is that correct? Am I?
Ask me again, Dave, I'm sorry, were you asking me?
The light on Bear Avenue?
Light on? Yes, I'm sorry, I was, I apologize, I wasn't trying to ignore you. Yeah, so that has been turned over to Black Hills Energy, and I have not heard back on whether or not one of those, one of those we think is ours. We'll have to go do that, but Black Hills has that.
Thank you. Culbrook Street Sign, we're looking into it. That's basically what we've come up with. Now, streets and maintenance, trimming of trees in the alleys, that's going to begin somewhere in the fall when we start getting possibly caught up. Valley View Drainage Improvement scheduled and cost materials, that'll be going on next spring. Let's see. For Boardwalk Hill in Albany. Still having trouble writing. Icy spot at Vision Source Albany Road, with that, we're just kind of waiting for the project to get kind of caught up to that and see where we'll be as far as taking care of that. Let's see. Summit Road, basically the wall that's at Vendors Park, food vendors. We put no climbing signs on there for the kids. That'll be, that wall will be a project in the future, probably quite a ways in the future now. We did discuss the ADA ramp near Massa Dental. Got a plan for that. Also access to sidewalk on north end of Centennial Park. Then we're moving on to utilities. We had an update on utilities. Wastewater Treatment Plant update was late fall for getting the lid on the digester put up, and.
Clarifier on?
Yeah, clarifier, excuse me. Should have wrote that down. Fire hydrant pressure on Edgewood Terrace. It looks like it's going to be replaced, that line. Code enforcement, we had an update on that, what was going on and what, where we're going with that.
Bob, can I, or Dave, sorry, can I interject on that one?
Yeah, you go ahead.
So I want to advise counsel that we are within, probably in the next two weeks, ready to start the final enforcement piece on a lot of those properties that have been notified. I, we will come to counsel, well, notify counsel before we actually know the day, date, time, and coordination with law enforcement. So I just want to let you know that it is moving ahead. We expect in the next two to three weeks at the most, we'll be doing that. I have to meet with the chief and work out some details on his support, but just so you know where we're at with that.
Okay. And these are, those will be the ones that didn't want to work with us?
Yes, sir, they're the ones that have not, have not responded.
Okay. Just to clarify that for the public.
Yeah, and we had a lot, we've had a lot of folks, very cooperative. I mean, that list is down to a few, and, but that's the, that's the extreme list with a lot of vehicles and all that, so, but the other ones have been very cooperative.
I think we did well this past year. We discussed Fall River cleanup for old business, the alternative cleanup, I guess I should say. Just waiting to see how this is going to work out for us. Pretty much everything that they intended on doing is done. Clubhouse retaining wall, we discussed that. Trying to put together some more, some more information. And community garden update was, I would say, a success for this past year.
Very much.
And we could be looking at more property as time goes by to add to that. Dollar General, we discussed that their faux pas on the road in the wall. They have a plan to have that repaired because of property owners around them, but they tried to buy their property. It fell through. And that should be it.
Craig, you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I went, looked at that propane tank on Bear Avenue. That's set there since, a different tank, that propane tank's been there since the 70s.
Yeah, no, I believe it has been. Well, I'm just waiting for an answer back whether it's safe or unsafe, where it's at. I don't know.
Well, I think it's five, six foot off the road.
I believe so, at least.
So, I mean, somebody's really going to have to be hooked around that corner to hit the propane tank because it's up on the bank.
This is not a major concern. It was brought to our attention by a resident who is a retired engineer. He was concerned about it. I said we'd look into it. It's not, we don't feel a suppressing safety issue.
It is a ways off the road at the, you know, if need be. I guess you could always put a post or something in for protection.
I know.
That's it for me.
Any questions for David Craig?
I do. On your handicap that you're talking about on the north side, what was the, who approached you with that, if you're at liberty to say?
North Side Water Park.
Centennial Park.
Well, originally.
Gentleman in wheelchair.
One of our handicapped wheelchair, electric wheelchair folks.
Because I thought it was the advocate from Black Hills Special Service. I know he and I had talked, and I think I talked to you, and we had, and I thought maybe it's the same thing, I don't know, but we had talked initially about handicap being at the, at each pavilion so that you could have handicap parking on each side, and I thought, I'm totally out of, so.
That was brought up, that particular one was brought up while I was on my medical leave. Who actually approached? I don't know, I didn't meet him. I don't have a name for it.
He came or maybe he scooted around down all the time, and so he thought that'd be a good place, since the curb's gone and we have to pour it anyway.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Massa, that's been a conversation. Last time I had a conversation was probably about five months ago.
Yeah, you and I had talked about it, I think, a year ago on that one.
Yeah, prior to that, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Not a problem. We decided that we do 30 something foot by Massa. Like I told Bob, the sidewalk right there is, I don't know about the distance back, but the sidewalk is in really rough shape right there. So that might have to be addressed, too.
Have you, Larry, have you looked at the area that you're talking about?
Yeah, I saw, I looked at what I stopped signing in that area right there. The 30 foot is great, and the mayor and I and Jeff have talked about this. One of the standard sizes for length of a bus would be 34 foot long, but a 30 would be good because two or three buses in town have the lift that goes down to back. There, but most of your vehicles in town have your lifts in the middle of the vehicle. They're, they're banned, so 30 foot would be, would be good. I think it would suffice at that point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let me add a couple things to Dave's report. Boardwalk is more accurately, as far as the immediate work that needs to be done, the significant work that needs to be done is Albany at the top of the hill there. If you folks remember, late spring, early summer, we had a huge water leak that just really tore that road up there. The problem we're having with Boardwalk and also Massa Dental is finding somebody that can do concrete work. The city staff has reached out to all the different contracting folks, cement folks in town, and nobody has, has the time to get those things done. So when it comes to Albany, that's what's holding us up. We don't want to put down brand-new asphalt if we don't have a curb and a sidewalk there. That's, that's holding us up. Likewise, the concrete work for both Massa and the north end of Centennial Park is being held up because we can't find anybody to do the concrete work for us, which means then it falls back on the city crews to get taken care of and getting it scheduled into everything they're doing. It's probably going to take some time.
There are active.
Yeah, I'd let people know that, that I talked to, what's going on with the road project, but most people are on, of the mindset that at least if we got the, the Massa done, that would, that would be sufficient for now, so.
There are active work orders for all of both those deals, so they're, we're trying to get them on the maintenance schedule now, so.
At this point, are we just looking at just doing it ourselves then? Are we going to open it up?
It, I don't know, I don't have an answer for that, Dick, I don't know. I mean, right now, opening it up is, is kind of a waste of time because there's nobody to do it. So we'll do what we can ourselves. Once the project starts to slow down a little bit, my, our guys will be a little, have a little more time to get caught up, but, and I apologize, I had intended to start bringing copies of the current open work order list with me for your information, and I did not think about it earlier, so I will do that next time.
The last thing is the Fall River. Uh, the last thing is the, the Fall River cleanup, uh, if you folks remember, the, the group that had asked the, the city to give them some time to do their style of cleanup, uh, adjacent to the American Legion, they had talked about three different sessions, they thought it would run through the end of September, maybe into October. They haven't gotten back with us to say that they're done, uh, in looking at it, it looks like they've accomplished, uh, their goal, but they haven't said anything to the city that we are done, so that we can assess, um, whether it meets your requirements. For me, uh, there needs to be more done, there's an awful lot of cattails that are left there, but we need to have, have that discussion with them, give them the opportunity to tell us, um, how successful they feel their removal, uh, plans were, so we can have that discussion.
When will the Corps be coming through to do their inspection?
We don't know when the Corps will be coming through to do the inspection, the last conversation Tracy and I had with Lowell Blankers from the Corps, um, they wanted to get it done at the end of their fiscal year, which was Friday, uh, haven't heard from them. I'll be out of, uh, away from City Hall through next Wednesday, I've had the conversation with, uh, Jeff and, um, Tracy and, and Craig and, and Dave, to let them know that when the Corps gets here, uh, we have a number of questions that we need to ask them, uh, most importantly for me, is we need a definite statement from the Corps, uh, that the city is meeting our obligations under the, uh, the contract, the, the agreement we have with them, uh, we're not meeting it, we're being overly aggressive, whatever it is, the Corps needs to, uh, step up and tell us how we're doing, uh, that's what we're getting, uh, beat up with the most, is that, uh, we're doing too much, we don't need to be as aggressive as we are, uh, my personal feeling is, we need to get the, the cattails out, we need to get our river back, um, so we'll, we'll have those conversations, so, if the Corps does reach out to us, um, Dave and Craig are, are ready to talk with them, Jeff's ready to talk with them, Tracy's ready to talk with them, uh, and, uh, I asked, uh, the folks to reach out to, uh, the folks that are cleaning the river up, to have, uh, a couple of them available, uh, so that, uh, they can hear what the Corps is telling us also. At this point, Larry, Corps hasn't let us know when they're going to be here.
And I agree with you, because the last inspection was kind, to me, was kind of vague on invasive species, I'd like to know, like you said, or, not saying you said, I'd like to know if the Corps specifically wants those cattails out of there, I would like to see that in a statement.
Yeah, and even if they don't want, if they don't require them to be out, is it okay that we take them out?
Correct.
And are, are they going to say, no, you, you've removed too many?
All I can say is a few people I've talked to through the Corps have stated that the cattails have to go, so.
Yeah. All right. Southern Hills Golf Course, Jeff?
Golf Course, the next advisory committee meeting is at 6:00 PM on the 11th, I don't have that in my notes, but it is on the 11th, sorry.
Not the 10th?
Nope, it's, let me, oh, let me just double check, I've got it on the 11th, they move it every month, so I have a hard time tracking this.
Try being merry and get the calendar out a month in advance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I am sorry about that, but, um...
Is City Hall closed on the 10th?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, then, you're right, I apologize.
They have it at City Hall?
Sorry, no, no, but they don't do them on your own.
Oh.
Well, I, I tell you what, because I don't control the, the, the schedule of this, they work it around when they can get together, so, quite frankly, it's month to month, but you track, it is on the 11th, 6:00 PM at the Pro Show, um, and that's it for the Golf Course. City Administrator Report, uh, the only thing I wanted to mention this, after this evening, is the school district is proposing investing some capital money of theirs into Mueller Field, the soccer field out here, um, they don't have approval of their board yet, so, this is another proposal, we've accepted, um, certainly, we would accept any, any offer they have to, to upgrade the field, it's a multi-phase project which we have to develop, but the first phase, we're getting in now, trying to get in now before winter, so we want to, they've, they've agreed to come in and pay for the irrigation of the field, to do the top soil, the, the amending of the, of the, uh, soil, uh, reseeding and aerating, and get that all ready for, for, uh, spring, so anyway, I just want to let council know that, uh, they are coming forward with that improvement to that field, uh, and it's, it's within the scope of the current agreement we have with the school district. The, um, as I mentioned, I will start reading comments from the community at my report, and just a reminder, because you just approved it, I have to be gone the rest of this week, so, I will be out, uh, working remotely by phone, if you need me, subject to your questions, that's all I've got.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
You said that's a soccer field, right, is that the conversation that we had in your office that one day?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you, Larry.
Is that the conversation you and I had in your office that one day?
Yep.
So I don't, at this point, I really don't need to put that on my agenda.
I don't believe so, I, I need to, when I come to next park and rec, uh, committee meeting, I will inform them of what, what we're doing over there.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for us.
Any other questions? Misty, Finance Officer Report?
You all have my written, uh, report, and also the financial reports, including the year-to-date profit and loss summary, which at our admin meeting, we pointed out and discussed, the loss in the general fund is largely impacted by the transfer you approved at the last meeting to the 501 Fund, uh, same with the additional sales tax fund, the loss in that fund is the result of the transfer you approved at that meeting, which is why the 501 Fund has a gain now and had such a large loss before. Waste water and water funds also have losses year-to-date, um, as well as the solid waste fund, but the Golf Course and the Evans Plunge Fund do not have losses year-to-date. Our fund summary report, the budget to actual, although many of these numbers are significantly over a hundred percent, uh, you should know what decisions have made to affect those so far this year, and know that I am growing a pretty large supplemental appropriation for the second one for the year that you'll read in November to cover those, um, expenses related to the large projects we have going on. The cash balance report is just the Lowell Fargo account, it shows ten million eight hundred thousand approximately, and also breaks that balance down by fund for you. Um, you have your investment reports by institution and investment type, which includes all of the cash assets of the city, and then, uh, the list of the certificates of deposits and US Treasury bonds, and we did just on Friday renew, um, the Evans Plunge Debt Service Reserve, uh, Treasury bond, and then we also, in November, have the Cemetery Perpetual Care Bond that we'll be renewing, and hope that rates continue to go up, because it's nice to see those new higher rates on some of that money that we're not using anyway. Uh, it's hard to believe that we've entered the last quarter, I did review our sales tax collections, and overall, we have an increase of ten and a half percent, or a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, that's not all additional money, because we did budget for an increase, but it's nice to see, it's a good trend. Unfortunately, the gross receipts tax, or the 2-1-1 Fund, the liquor lodging and dining, or bedboard and booze, whatever you want to call it, um, that funds eighty percent of our chamber, that's down seven percent, or eleven thousand from this time last year, and if you remember, uh, 2021 was significantly higher than 2020 because it was so impacted by the pandemic, so this may be just the pendulum swinging back to a little more normal. Uh, you did hear in JR's report that the South Dakota Department of Labor released the new state minimum wage to be effective on January 1st, the increase is eighty-five cents, so, uh, our South Dakota minimum wage is going from nine ninety-five to ten eighty. Federal minimum wage remains unchanged at seven and a quarter, and as usual, we'll have a resolution establishing part-time and seasonal employee pay rates, as we've done in the past, we approve equivalent increases for all seasonal and part-time positions, we did budget fifty cents for this increase, so we're a little short, um, but the new rates don't come out prior to the required passage of the budget, so it's one of those tough, uh, things to estimate. Speaking of the budget, thank you for that approval, as we discussed, two point five million dollars of cash applied to balance the 501 Fund, a small measly six hundred and fifty dollars in the 612 solid waste fund was needed to balance that budget, um, we allocated a hundred and sixty-four thousand to outside organizations, and I have certified the municipal tax levy to the county auditor on September 23rd for the maximum amount available of one million two hundred ninety-five thousand, as we discussed during budget meetings, historically we only collect about ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent of the amount levied, so our 2023 budget calculates revenue for current-year general property taxes at one million two hundred and fifty-six thousand. I want to make sure that you're all aware that although our levied amount increased by the max allowable CPI and growth percentages, the overall mill levy decreased from five point nine eight to four point eight two, per one thousand dollars of taxable value, so that means lower property taxes for homeowners in the city if no changes to property valuations over the last year have occurred, so that's good news. I recently completed the annual unclaimed property report, it was considered a negative report, that sounds like nothing, because that's what I reported, I have nothing to send to them, um, but, that's the kind of big deal for us, we do issue a number of checks every year, and it does take some work to stay on top of those and make sure that people are cashing them, especially the smaller checks, we see a lot of times a recreation refund or a water deposit refund under ten dollars, people throw those checks aside, and if they don't cash them within the dormancy table and the period is three years after we issue it, then we're required by statute to report that and submit that money to the state, unclaimed property, and so we're happy to be able to give that money to who it belongs to and not have to send that money to the state, and so a negative report is a good thing. We talked a little bit about the loss recap on the city buildings damaged by the June 13th hailstorm, because of the significant dollar amount, we did have reinsurance come out and inspect the buildings, and there's a lot of different numbers on the report that I'm going to send out to you, but because of the volume of these, this is going to come in front of council for you to approve the decisions, we're, our staffs and aldermen are recommending for the one point four million in damages, now that's just a ACV value, and if we do repairs and the repairs end up costing more, there is more insurance money to do those, but if we decide not to do repairs and know it's not insurance fraud, we can choose to do that, we can take that ACV value and keep it, but again, just like we talked about with the cars, a decision needs to be made, because if some big tornado or fire comes through and completely damages buildings we don't repair, our subsequent claim would be reduced by that amount, um, so I'm going to send you all information, and on the next council agenda, you're going to have, um, the opportunity to review and discuss those decisions, and give us a way forward so we can start with, uh, the process required to put those repairs out for bid, which will be another big job. As council members, you're tasked with many responsibilities, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, you chair and attend various committee meetings, you review and approve all claims, policies, contracts, agreements, budgets, resolutions, ordinances, and a host of other items, and I realize that's a very big job. I know it can be uncomfortable asking questions or making very public decisions, but it is a requirement of the position you hold. As council members, you often receive requests and even strong demands from special interest groups and individuals, I and other city staff members understand and appreciate how difficult this can be. Although individually, you hold no authority to make promises on behalf of the city, collectively, you represent the entire city, in order to do this effectively, you must consider the merits of each request, complaint, or idea, and then vote together to approve, modify, or reject them. With each decision made, you have to analyze the needs of the entire community, not just one group or individual, this takes careful consideration of the request, alternatives, and an understanding of our available resources, it's impossible to do this without adequate information, making decisions regarding items you're unfamiliar with or uncertain about is not in the city's best interests, you should feel as comfortable as possible when voting on issues before you, so I encourage you to ask, listen, learn, and weigh all relevant information before voting on any item. To me, you're not a pain, you're not overstepping your bounds or micromanaging, you are in fact fulfilling your oath of office and obligation to the taxpayers and citizens of our community by ensuring you have the complete picture, and the finance staff, I'm speaking for you too, Jeff, is here to help with this in any way possible, so please don't hesitate to reach out when additional information is needed. Thank you for your commitment to our city and your willingness to serve, we simply couldn't do it without you. And I'll be out of the office the 14th and the 17th, so I won't be here for the next council meeting, but Jeff's going to pitch it.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty. Uh, because we have an executive session, it may take a while, uh, I just have one item I want to share with you folks, um, Jeff and I have had several phone calls with ISG about our wayfinding signage project, uh, we're focusing on the sign requirements for state highways, from the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, 2009 edition, that's published by the US Department of Transportation, because Highway 385 is a state highway, the MUTCD is what we'll need to use to determine the look of the signs along the Highway 385 corridor. I'm asking Dave and Craig and the Public Works Committee to begin discussing what the locations and content for the signs should be, and I'll get you, um, you know, information that will help inform those discussions, and that will be the public's opportunity to attend, uh, an open, an open meeting and advocate for what locations they feel, uh, should be on the signs. So we've begun having those conversations, I think they've been very good conversations, ISG's been very helpful, they have reached out to a number of other communities to figure out, uh, how those communities, uh, decided what locations should or shouldn't be on the signs, uh, that's been helpful, uh, Jeff, is there anything you want to add along that line?
No, I think they're making good progress, ISG's a very impressive organization, so...
Okay. Uh, and then, lastly, uh, I want to mention that, uh, my wife Alith and I will be not only out of town, we're going to be out of state from, uh, the 5th, Wednesday, through the following Wednesday, the 13th, uh, typically, when I'm out of town, um, I mentioned that I'm willing to take phone calls, uh, this time around, uh, I'll take phone calls, but only calls that come from Bill or Dave. If between Bill, Dave, Misty, and, uh, or, uh, again, uh, I'll take calls from Bill and Dave. And that's it, so, um...
Ouch.
One other thing I thought I wanted to add there.
That's my call to tell you my T-shirt size, you can give me a T-shirt.
Better tactic if you're not taking it.
If Bill or Dave feel that that call is necessary, I'll take it.
Or use one of their phones.
Okay, so with that, uh, we have an executive session on the agenda.
I make a motion, we go into executive session, in accordance with South Dakota codified law, 1-25-2, 3, legal.
Second.
Discussion, um, Misty, Jeff, Garland, if you would join us in executive session, and there won't be any action taken after executive session, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and there'll be, uh, at least a five-minute pause before we resume an executive session.